We will go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Longhoke City Council for Tuesday, October 17th, 2023 to order. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck.
Excused absence.
And Mayor Janelle Osborne.
Here.
Pastor Nate Marsh, would you please come forward and lead us in the invocation, followed by our pledge?
Let's pray. God, our Creator and the Sustainer of life, the ruler of all things, lift us up as we humble ourselves before you. Confront our bad or self-centered motives because we are easily tempted. Make us adequate reflections of you serving and loving each other to the point of even sacrificing our own benefits and blessings. God, help us to forgive and seek reconciliation, just as you have done for us when we cry out to you. God, you do amazing things for us, and I think of the wonderful plans the city has in place to create the multimodal upgrades on H Street. And I pray that these plans enhance Longhoke and make our town a more friendly place. Lord, thank you for the recognitions that these plans have received, and may the plans be swiftly implemented to expedite the positive changes for our community. But God, you not only bless, you judge. Would you judge those who perpetrate evil on others? Give them a just punishment for their disregard for you and for others. Chastise them for failing to act as you would. And give courage and boldness to all to confront evil when it seeks to spread its disease, even in secret or shadowy places. Carefully guard the guardians of our community. Be a shield for our police. Give wisdom to our judges and court personnel. Bless our city council with insight and shrewdness to grow our beautiful town with the resources you've provided. Care for those who care for us. Lord, bless our community and give Longhoke better days ahead than we've ever seen before. Because of your mercy and grace, we place our hope in you. We give you our praise and thanks. Amen.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Dean Albrode, do you have anything to report?
Yes, I do. A couple of things I wanted to announce. One, we got an email from Randy Howard, our, the general manager for NCPA. And one of the cool things that he brought to our attention was part of the bipartisan infrastructure and jobs law that they approved $7 billion for hydrogen projects. Of that $7 billion, 1.2 is for California Hydrogen Hub. And part of that was, that was submitted was the Lodi Energy Center. So it's pretty exciting that we're going to get some funding for hydrogen projects in California and part of our NCPA. I also want to let everybody know that we received an award for the Public Power Communications from the American Power Association for our website and social media for the 100th birthday of the electric company. So I wanted to thank Samantha, Stephen, and Juan for their, their efforts they did there. It was awesome. I also want to let everybody know that we have Make a Difference Day. That'll be Saturday, October 28th. We'll be meeting here at 8:30, and they'll start around 9:30, and they'll also be providing lunch, so encourage everybody to come on out. I also wanted to thank the EDA this, this Sunday for the city family picnic. It was a great picnic. They did a great job. I also want to let everybody know that we received from SB CAG the REAP 2.0 Permit Ready ADU program in the amount of $450,000. So some cool things happening, so that's all I have.
Thank you for that. Any other questions? Just for clarity, the reason the Lodi Energy Center is so exciting is Longhoke is a part owner in that with the National, Northern California Power Agency as part of our membership. We helped build it, and we are still helping pay that off. And so to convert that to a hydrogen hub means that it will extend the life and the value to our community. So that's why it's such a huge benefit to us for the awarding. And then, yeah, the REAP funding for the Permit Ready ADU program is really exciting. It's something I know I've asked for, for a long time, and part of the, the holdup has been funding. So this is exciting to know that we can get a plan in place, and you can come in and have a choice of plans. So we'll get to work on that ASAP, as I see our community development director's head nodding yes. So that's exciting. So I'm really thrilled with those two. All right, seeing no other questions or comments for the city manager, we'll move on to Consent Calendar. If you would like to speak to an item on Consent Calendar, which is items one through six, you may come to the podium. You will have three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. While we wait to see if anyone comes in or calls, I will read the process. All items listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted after one motion in the form listed below. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless good cause is shown prior to the council vote. Any items withdrawn from the Consent Calendar for separate discussion will be addressed immediately before the second oral communication near the end of the meeting.
Seeing no one rise and no one call in, we'll bring it back to council. Is there an item that anyone would like to pull or has any questions on that isn't something of depth? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Councilmember Ball.
Just a real quick question. On item number five, just want to make sure people understand what that is. We're not letting developers off the hook for paying impact fees. It's a deferral. Can you just clarify that for us?
Sure. So typically, when developments come forward, one of the most expensive costs that they incur is prior to issuance or when they get their building permit. And, for example, it could be a couple hundred thousand dollars for a commercial project. It really depends on the type of project. And front-ending and financing those costs can be very challenging for development. So we are looking for ways to assist developers and incentivize them moving forward with their projects quicker and to assist them in getting financing. So the Development Impact Fee Deferral Program will allow them to defer those fees, and instead of having to pay them at building permit issuance, they could pay them at certificate of occupancy or final inspection. So it'll give them a nice amount of time, and they'll be so much closer to actually realizing the revenues from the business to actually cover that, so they're not having to finance it and carry all of that financing, given what interest rates have been recently. I think anything we can do that isn't impacting our general fund, we should try to do it. And so that was the intent of this program.
Thank you for that. I think the incentive is very helpful. Just to be clear, so if somebody does get to the point, they get their CTO or their certificate of occupancy, they can't open unless they're paying those impact fees. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Number four, I'd like a little bit more of explanation on the authorization for examination of sales and use tax. Right now, it seems like there must be restrictive on who can see it, who can't. Maybe someone can explain to us.
Yeah, basically, we're just updating the titles. So we've, we've done it for quite a while, but we've had a couple of title changes throughout the years, so we wanted to upgrade, update the titles. So we, we hire a company called HDL that actually analyzes our sales tax and makes sure that they get all the sales tax we possibly can, and they give us briefing and updates. So that's what we're just doing, is updating those titles.
Thanks.
All right. Any more questions? Councilmember Vega.
I'll make a motion that we accept.
All right.
I'll second.
So it's been moved by Councilmember Vega, seconded by Councilmember Ball. Seeing no other questions, let's vote. And that passes for zero and one in absence. Joe. All right. The next item on the event, agenda is a Finance Department to provide an update on the city's electric utility operation and reserve funds.
Good evening. This is going to be really quick. I just want to go over. Council had requested that we come back and give you an update in October after having gone through the process of raising electric rates and just to see where our revenues are. So we're doing a, a status check-in. Just a quick recap. At the end of 2022, we began to observe a critical downturn in electric fund cash due to increased volatility and increased power costs, and we proposed an emergency 30% rate increase. That rate increase was approved on April 18th and implemented effective May bills, with the first bills seeing the new rates in June. The first increase in cash was observed on, on the books in July when the June bills were paid. And so we're coming now about three months after starting to see that, that increase come in. And so I've got a little graph here for you. The dotted lines are what we were originally projecting if we had not made any changes. The red is our expended, the expenses. And at the time, because of all the volatility that we were seeing in the electric fund, we, and, and the, the rates of increase here, we anticipated that continuing to go up. One of the pieces of good news here is that that actually didn't happen as, as we had anticipated. Rates were able to be mitigated to some extent because of the huge amount of rain that we had and the fact that the electric department was able, well, the electric power, the plants were able to run hydro and offset the cost of some of the power. They're still not down. They're just not rising the way we thought that they were. The revenues, we had anticipated this, this dotted line here if we had done nothing. But as you can see, starting in right about May, when we started to book those revenues, the revenue started to increase. And what, what I want to point out here is that what we're seeing is just like back in these months where revenues and expenses were in, in line, so right about the same amount of revenues, equal expenses. We're getting pretty close to that here as well, and so we don't see the disparity as much now. On our cash, so our cash balance back in January of 2022, this is, this is good, right here. This is what we want. We've got our, our reserve is this green line. Our operating cash, effective operating cash is this purple line. And the blue line is our, all of our unrestricted cash, including what's in our, what we call gore. This is the trend that we saw, not just trend, but this is what cash was doing. And we saw that it went below, the effective operating cash had gone below zero, and the gore was offsetting that. And we were looking at the gore getting down below our, our reserve line, and that was a very large concern. This was the projection that we saw if we hadn't done anything. And you can see, right about here in June, when we started to get payments on the bills that had the increased rates, as you would expect, the, the cash started to go up a little bit. It's a nice gradual but consistent increase. But I want to point out that it's still below zero. What we want to be able to do is get back to here, where our effective operating cash is at the reserve level, and the gore would put us in a place where we are, are able to finance the infrastructure or, or have the reserve for the infrastructure. So real quick takeaways, as you would expect, increased rates have resulted in increased revenue. Our costs of power have been mitigated this season due to the unprecedented rainfall and running hydro, but there's still serious volatility in the market. And just because we had that reprieve, we need to know that this is a volatile industry. So operating cash is still below zero and will take diligence and time to recover to our target reserve level. And our electric rate study is in process and is still expected to be brought to council before the end of the fiscal year. And that's what I have.
Any questions? Councilmember Ball.
So I was just curious, because, you know, just going back thinking about it, obviously, we all agree that it was an emergency to do this. We're definitely under the zero, and we need some operating cash. But the projected things, you know, you can take a stab at what might happen in the future. No one knows. But we're kind of riding underneath what that projection was. Is there any updates on how we should consider the length or the, how stressful the emergency is? Is it slightly less stressful, or is our goal now less emergency and more just getting back to that reserve level?
So I, I like to look at this, no, not this, next one. We're still below zero. That, we can't, we can't alter course until at the very minimum we see that change. If we project this out, you're looking at, if it continues along the same rate of revenues over expenses, which, again, we've had three months of lower expenses. That isn't really enough to make a long-term projection. But it, if we continue at the same rate that we have of revenues over expenses, I would anticipate us being able to get back up to this zero line, which isn't sufficient buffer. Really, we would need to be back up to here by December, December to February timeframe. My hope is that that's about when we're going to be able to bring you a rate, a rate study, or at least get, have some preliminary, preliminary indications of a rate study and where it's headed. So my advice would be that we stay the course until we can see the rate study. And we'll come back. I, I believe that there was a, a second update that we were supposed to bring, and I don't remember the specific date on that. But we can come back and give another update as we get closer, have a little bit more data. And then, bring the, when we bring the rate study, we can look at it comprehensively. And, and how do we make sure that we get, get to the reserves that we need to be at and stay there and make sure that we're funding for longevity?
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Any other questions? Thank you for the update, and we'll keep hoping for more rain. For more reasons than just one. All right, back to the agenda. This is your time for oral communications regarding items that are not on the agenda but in city purview. So if you would like to comment, you're welcome to come to the microphone for three minutes, or you may call in at 805-875-8201.
My name is Sherri Foster. I've been a member of this community in Longhoke for 22 years. Under the unethical and moral policy decisions of Longhoke City Council and Longhoke Public Schools has become a hotbed of controversy through institutional racism and discrimination with preferential treatment of some and not others. California has always been a free state until recently. Equal rights under the Civil Rights Act of 1866, 42 USC, 1981, denial of public privileges in education protects adults and children from unscrupulous behavior in our city and public schools who are influenced from the private labor, teachers' unions. We will not support preferential treatment towards any group as it is discrimination to make residents who were never slave owners pay for the sins of others through taxation through school bonds. We, the people, the residents, can and will ensure that the children of our community here in Longhoke are protected under common law that does not fall out of grace with our state constitution of 1850 and the US Constitution of the United States of 1776. We must ensure the pursuit of life, liberty, and happiness as our creator and forefathers intended us to do. The people for Longhoke and their children deserve to live in peace over the failed policies of the city and the public schools whose labor and teacher organizations influence through government overreach. Why not admit to those mistakes that have failed the people and children and work towards the restorative republic former government known as We the People for Longhoke? The good people of Longhoke and children need to know that our true constitution of 1849 was compacted with God and ratified by Congress before California was admitted into the Union for the United States in 1850. It has been amended just three or four times, which means that the California Constitution of 1879 was incorporated, and it does not have constitutional standing and is unconstitutional and has been amended over 922 times as of the year 2020. Our state has never become the sovereign republic that our forefathers and ancestors intended to be for us in over 234 years. My source is Georgetown University on the two constitutions, and thank you for your service.
Hello, just ask for a little assistance. Between the streets of C and A on Laurel, the railroad track area there, there's one section left there that has weeds that are approximately seven feet tall. We've already put complaints in because there's a refrigerator, some couches, someone dismantled the entire shed there. They've been dumping lawn clippings. They've, I know the one owner had called because some landscaping business, they're downloading their trailer in that place. If you get back into the weeds, you find where the homeless have been making their beds. They got areas back there, they're going to the bathroom. I found needles back there. I found a box that had clothing in it with a big bag of marijuana that was just dumped off. We have reported this to code enforcement a while back. The weeds are still there. It's still over seven foot tall. The refrigerator's still there. The couch is there. All the trash is still there. We're trying to get it cleaned up, but we can't because, you know, these weeds are so invasive. And whoever does go in there is going to have to walk up first to make sure there ain't nobody sleeping in this stuff before they, they cut it. Plus, get all the heavy, you know, trash out of there, because, you know, it ain't just small stuff in there. There's chairs back up in there. It's just, just one little section there. And the, the, the west end is taken care of. The owner takes care of that. It's that other, the middle section through there down to, to A Street that has, that really needs some assistance. And it's pretty bad, you know. And we get what we can. We go out and clean up, me and, me and my wife clean as often as we can. But at this point, we, it's a losing battle. So we need some help. Thank you.
All right, seeing no one else rise and no one call in, we'll bring it back to the agenda. Item number seven is council appointments to city boards, commissions, and committees. Currently, we have applicants for the Public Safety Commission. We have two applications. We have Nikolai Nikolinko from District Four and Juan Herrera from District Three. And we have one position open, that is Councilmember Vega's, which is District Two. Councilmember Vega, it has been 90 days. Is there an applicant you'd like to consider? Or would you like to make an appeal for more applications?
There is a, a couple of good applicants here, but I'd like a little bit more time to vet them out a little bit more. I think it's a really important position, and I appreciate the applications. I need to do my homework a little bit here and before I appoint someone into a really important position.
Okay, so we will continue that item. And just for the public's education, there is an updated list under committees and commissions, but the Airport Commission has four vacancies. Those are all at large. There is one position open on the Beautification Commission. That is the mayor's appointee, so that can be from any district. So if you're interested in that, please submit an application. And there is a vacancy on the Planning Commission. That is Councilmember Cordova's, which is District One. So if you're interested in that, please submit. And the, you heard, Public Safety, which is District Two under Councilmember Vega. Then the Utility Commission has two openings, one for Council Vega under District Two and one for Councilmember Cordova under District Three. And then the Youth Commission has several positions available for youth. So there is one regular and three associate levels. Associates are great ways to learn what the committee and commission is and, and step into a regular youth appointment. And there is one position open for the adult leadership on that. So if you're interested, you can either walk in and pick up an application from the city clerk, or you can go to our city website, the committees and commissions, and there is an application there you can download. There's also descriptions of the committees, so you're welcome to do that. So we will continue that item. All right, were there any written communications, Madam Clerk?
No, ma'am, nothing.
This is your final opportunity for oral communications on city matters. If you would like to speak, you have two minutes. You may come to the podium, or you may call in at 805-875-8201, 805-875-8201. While we wait, because of the delay, both on TV and radio, I will make one of the many announcements. And one of those is I want to congratulate the Planning Department for receiving another award for their multimodal improvement plan from the California Chapter of American Planning Association from September. So congratulations again. It's a great plan. I know a lot of people want to see things happen there, but we have to work in partnership with Caltrans, as they are the owners of Ocean and H. And we work with them to make these improvements, which is why the plan was so important. And that's part of why you see the paving being completed on Ocean. So thank you for your patience there as well. I know that has affected a lot of individuals, even overnight, for that work. All right, seeing no one rise and no one call in, we will close the final oral communications of the evening and bring it back to council. We'll lead off with Councilmember Ball.
Okay, I'll try to be super quick. A couple of events I got to attend. I know the mayor wasn't feeling good, so she asked if I'd go on her stead, so I appreciate that opportunity. But Floriano's had a community meal, feeding a lot of folks in the community that were a little less fortunate. And it was a really packed event, and it was good to see a lot of service providers and, and people with a lot of smiles and people eating a delicious meal. So thank you to the mayor for the opportunity and to Antonio and everyone at Floriano's for providing that meal. I thought that was very thoughtful. And they're looking forward to hopefully doing that maybe once a quarter or twice a year. I think that's great. C4, the local group here, just had a self-healing communities event this past Sunday. It was great. A lot of young people getting together and talking about issues and issues of violence and how they can support each other and look for ways to find some positive growth in the community, and I thought that was very helpful, and I was honored to attend. And just a reminder, they mentioned it earlier, the Make a Difference Day, that's October 28th. Put that on your, put that on your calendar. I'm going to be out there somewhere where they put me, try to sweep something up or get rid of some dust or paint over something. We'll see. But I hope to see you out there. And then that same day, a little bit later in the afternoon, is the Old Town Trick or Treat put on by the Chamber. So if you're all into candy and seeing lots of cool little kids show off their latest costumes, we're torn, my son is torn between a turtle and a firefighter right now. We'll talk to mom and see how that lands, but don't forget about Trick or Treat for all the kids on October 28th. I think that's around 1 o'clock during, in the afternoon in downtown Longhoke. That's all I got.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Vega.
Couple of things. I'd like to do a shout out for some of the community enforcers out there as far as unregistered vehicles and vehicles around the schools and things. There's been some activity and some proactive activity on the city's part on cleaning up some of these areas, and I encourage them to keep looking toward those areas, especially near schools and stuff where we have vehicles that are broken down or just someone living in there, because I think that's probably not the right spot. Safety of our kids is important, so I, I would encourage a lot more proactiveness, but I think it's being done. And I've gotten the, I've been given the comments in a positive mode that all of a sudden they go, wow, it's gone, you know, somebody will. So it's kind of a good thing to see Longhoke cleaned up, so I want to give a shout out there. I think on another positive note, I think on another positive note, there's been people that have made comments about sometimes, you know, when people either speak a lot up here on the, on the dais or, or they don't, you know? Sometimes I'm quiet, sometimes we're learning, we're listening to make sure that we don't get in the way of positive progress. So sometimes that's what we're doing up here. Sometimes we can talk a lot and say nothing, but I really would like your input and the people because we do want Lompoc to move forward and, and be cleaner, be more economical. There's a lot of people out here that really are not seeing the benefit of all the rate increases and things like that. Okay? There's a lot of people that are hurting out there. If you go out to the food giveaways and stuff, you're going to see people out there with their boxes and stuff. And you know what? They're trying to make ends meet. We need to be cognizant of that because the people that are living and, and we're looking at the future, but some people are just looking at tomorrow or tonight to make sure they're eating. So I want to make sure that we don't forget those people in the mix of moving forward. And we do need your help, so I want to encourage more people out there to come and approach us because I'd have more to say if I had more input from people out there so that I could actually make a decision, not just on the agenda, but to see what people really want and need and see how many hardships are out there instead of somebody telling us what the hardships are. So that's what I'd like to do. And I think on the other end, and this is all positive, I'd like to know a little bit more about any of the developers that have gotten the green light to, to build. Be nice to know what their thought process is or if interest rates have kind of hindered them because a lot of people know we have developments out there that were approved. Williams Homes, we have Burton Ranch. Couple of things, every once in a while, just give us a glimpse of is there any movement or not? You know what I mean? Some people, they get excited to see any kind of movement, but you know, sometimes it's so quiet that you think they went away. So we need to make sure that Lompoc and the residents here know that these people haven't left and gone. Maybe they need a little bit more time, but it'd be nice to get an update, especially if the city knows. So thank you.
Could I just share real quick? I know a lot of people forget about this, but we did develop the story map on our planning page and that is usually pretty up to date, but it, it tells you where the project is at, like whether building permits were submitted, if they're in plan check, where they are in the project. So you mentioned River Terrace. We have all of their, all of their models are in plan check right now. So they're, they're moving forward. So if you ever want to look at that, it's a really cool map. It's, it's mobile friendly. It's, it's good to push out to the public when you're talking to your constituents who are curious. You could share that link.
Thank you for that reminder. Councilmember Cordova?
No reports.
All right. I attended the Northern California Power Agency Annual Conference. Within that conference was also the Legislative and Regulatory Committee meeting, which I am the chair for the executive and the regular meeting. I also had the honor, we had the former chief of staff for the Clinton era and the head of the CIA, Leon Panetta, as a speaker. And I had the pleasure of making the introduction. And so it was an honor to make his introduction and hear his insight of what's going on globally and how it's affecting our day-to-day lives. I also attended the United Way Mayor's Ball. It's to bring recognition of what's been done in the past year by United Way as well as make their annual ask. So I will also continue that here and let you know that a simple $220 per year sponsors all of the programs they provide to children in our community. So highly encourage you to go online and do that. They have some great programs. They call it Literary 2.0. So they do a financial literacy program with kids in school through setting up a bank account with a matching dollar that they will help and maintain all the way through graduating high school. They do parental education on financial literacy as well. They have the Dolly Parton Reading Literacy Program that they started. We got to hear from a young woman who was the first reader when she was five and she's now 16 and she is already getting ready to graduate high school and go on to UCSB. So learning to read young and often is proof. They also do the AmeriCorps and the Vista Volunteer Program, which helps them address many of the homeless issues in our community and is two different age groups that they approach. The Vista is more seniors and retirees. So if you're looking for a way to engage in the community, the United Way has several programs. And I just want to make my annual appeal that $220 supports a child in all the programs they provide to them for the year. So thank you, the United Way, for all that they're doing. We have a couple of other things going on in the community that is important. The, the Electrical Division has a planned outage. I normally don't make this announcement, but it's affecting 33 customers on Thursday. You should have gotten your notices. If you haven't, the affected areas are the 500 block of our street, the 500 block of Q Street, the 500 block of Dahlia Court, the 500 block of P Street and 920 and 916 Locust Avenue. So it is an eight-hour approximate time and it starts at 8:00 AM on Thursday. You can reach out to the Electrical Division for more information. You should have gotten notices, but it does affect 33 customers. The Community Development Division, the Community Development Block Grant and Human Service Fund, funding availability is open. There is a pre-application workshop that you must attend. That is Wednesday, November 8th at 10:30 PM here in the council chambers. And then you must use the neighborly software program to make the application and that due date is December 7th at 3:00 PM. You can contact the department and get more information or come to that Wednesday, November 8th, training program to understand the process. If you do not come to that and you don't use the neighborly software, you will get denied. We've had some on longtime applicants be denied for simply not following the process and we are here to help you. Staff will help you, help you understand the program. So don't hesitate to ask questions and use the process in order to be considered as part of the application process. The Lompoc Library is once again doing its tiny art show. They have kits available starting November 1st, little miniature canvases. You can stop by and pick them up and then return your creations on or before 7:00 PM on November 30th so they can display it later in the month of December. So it was a lot of fun last year to see what the community created, so don't hesitate to participate. The Lompoc Parks and Recs Division announced that they utilize the money that we approved as part of our current budget for scholarships. So 131 recreational scholarships totaling $17,000 in funding were utilized by low-income community members to access, a lot of it for the youth basketball program. So once again, I want to thank staff for finding the funds, setting them aside and for council approving those. It's going a long way to help with our youth be physically active. And last but not least, for those of you that have kids and the Thanksgiving holiday is coming up, the Parks and Recs Division is offering a Thanksgiving Day camp, break camp. So it will happen the 20th through the 22nd from noon to 5:15, six to 12 years of age, $40 per child. Pre-registration is required. You can go to the city website, go to the Recreation Division and get more information. So don't hesitate to take advantage of that program, especially for those parents that work. I want to thank everybody for attending despite having a short meeting and we will adjourn until the next regular meeting on November 7th, 2023.